All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Boston School Board meeting. I want to call this meeting to order at 7:01. The public is invited to call 603-766-5646. Enter participant code 685562 if you wish to make a public comment at the beginning of the meeting. Please wait for the chair's instructions and then press star nine. Your microphone will be unmuted and you will be directed to state your name and address prior to making your public comment. You can also email your public comment to Denise dot Moran at SAU19.org prior to 3:00 this afternoon. Please indicate public comment today's date, Boston School Board meeting, in the subject line, and include your name and address, and limit your comments to no more than 500 words. The board reserves the right to read your public comment during the meeting. However, any public comment will be included in the official meeting minutes. The board meeting can be viewed on GTV16 On Demand and will also be streamed live on the GTV UTM. We do have two board members calling in. When I call your name, if you can just say you're here and alone. Dan Kudier?
Yes, I am here. I'm by myself.
Thank you. And Janelle O'Brien?
I'm here and also by myself.
Thank you. If everybody can rise to say the pleasure of being here.
What allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we need to do the approval of the February 1st, 2021 board move. Anybody see anything? If you can make a motion. See, and Ellen, you make a motion to approve?
I remove to approve the minutes of February 1st, 2021.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Right, Tim? Any other discussion? Can I see an un? And now do a roll call. Jimmy?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Dan?
I'm abstaining as I did not get a chance to view the meeting.
Okay.
And I was not in attendance.
All right, Janelle?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Reta?
Yes.
And Ellen?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, for you now. All right, course comments?
None this evening.
All right, cool. Commendations, good news. Caleb?
I would like to, Emerald Anderson Ford, she's an experienced speaker, and she's speaking for the second time now on how to be a good ally to people of color, which I think is just a very important topic, and it's going to be happening this Wednesday, open to any student or staff member at the building, and I just think it's great that they're willing to just kind of give these resources, especially during this time when there's not a lot going on.
Great, thank you. Anyone else commendations, good news? All right, see, and none, open to public comment. Is there anybody online that?
I'll have to get back because I didn't have it up. I'm sorry. Hold on.
Denise, did you receive any emails? I do not.
It's going to be website.
Okay. Well, you're up now with the finance report.
That was quick.
That was quick.
All right, so tonight you have a manifest totaling $1,593,557.93 comprised of some of the major items, your payroll, taxes, and benefits, a little over $1.2 million. Special ed activity is a little over $113,000, and you'll note that we have a few that represent, you know, the bill on a semester-type basis, so I wanted you to know about that. General expenses, not many. SAU19 is your February assessment at $142,000 and change. We pay Dead River for propane and oil. Music Factory, this was audio equipment that we got from the supplemental grant at a little over $16,000. And last is PSAT, that is for testing at the high school. Food Service, we have a few, which usually you don't have a whole lot, but one of them is Kittridge Equipment. That was $9,200 and change, and that was for a steamer that was replaced, and Megan was able to secure a grant from the state for that entire purchase, so congratulations to her on that one. And then lastly, Performance Food Service, that is the vendor that we get most of our food and commodities from, that was a little over $5,400. So, again, pretty quiet in terms of a manifest, not a whole lot on there. Are there any questions from the board?
All right, see, and none, and Ellen, did you have a question?
No, it's going to move the manifest.
All right, so you're going to do a motion?
I remove the approval of the manifest of February 15th, 2021.
All right, thank you. Do I have a second? Right, Jimmy? Any other discussion? All right, see, and none, I'm going to do a roll call, Jimmy?
Yes.
Right, Jerry?
Yes.
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Reta?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, for you now. Thank you. Case Scott?
All right. The next is, again, this is just a notification, we don't need to have a public hearing, but the class of 2019, they donated, I think it was a little over $4,500 to the school. So with that, again, no public hearing is needed, but we should be thanking the class of 2019 for that donation. Just wanted you to let know that. And then last for me is, I try to give you the expenditure and revenue reports. You get those on a monthly basis, but I don't always provide you with a revenue status report, which I want to start off with tonight. Everything so far is trending as, pretty much as planned. I wanted to let you know, this is the sheet that you have in front of you on the first page. The, in terms of your tuition from New Boston, that's going to be higher than that, than what was budgeted, which is a good thing. Any monies that are over collections of revenues go back to offset the tax rate, a part of your fund balance. I wanted to point you to a couple of things which I've been paying attention to. The last line on their Medicaid reimbursement, we used to get over $300,000 from Medicaid to schools, and this year we dropped it down to $50,000 because of a whole host of problems, which I've explained to you in the past, you know, how hard it is to collect. But the good news is that I think we're on track to at least meet that meager estimate of $50,000. And then on the other one that's good news is the third line from the bottom, catastrophic aid. I have to change that to special ed aid. We budgeted a little over $200,000 in terms of revenue, and we're going to get almost $360,000, so that's a good thing. So that, again, will help our financial picture come the end of the year. But as you can see, in terms of a bottom line, we're tracking at almost 60% of our anticipated revenues, and I believe that we will more than likely exceed them, most likely because of the tuition from New Boston. Everything else is trending pretty much where it should, with the exception of that special ed aid, which was a bit higher. But we did, we are not getting revenues from kindergarten this year, just so you know, because we're not having role model students in the buildings. We are not getting as much for parking revenue here at the high school, and we haven't been able to rent our facilities out. So those are all things that we're not seeing, that we ordinarily would see. So that's the revenue picture. Are there any other questions on revenue?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Question on Medicaid reimbursement?
Yeah.
I know there have been for a number of years difficulties in the recording, how you collect all those hours and record it out, but is it also combined by any chance with a change in what qualifies? Because the services haven't decreased, right?
The services have not decreased. What's happened is, and I should back up, the Medicaid to schools program is a federal program. This is a program that we've received revenue for decades. This is not a new program, this is a program that's been around for a long time. What has been new is the state of New Hampshire has put additional administrative requirements for us to be able to find students eligible. So there was a period of time where we had to have a doctor, or a physician's assistant, or a nurse practitioner sign off on all services. That's something in the past that our own staff was able to order those services for their particular area. So we're hoping that we're starting to move in the right direction, but this has been incredibly problematic, and to have state roadblocks to accept federal revenue just seems counterintuitive in a state that doesn't already pay for an adequate education.
Are we okay with how the service providers are able to report the hours with the children?
Yes.
We're okay with that?
Yes. It had more to do with the authorizations.
Okay.
And some of the other requirements from the Department of Health and Human Services.
And that's across the state because?
That's the entire state, so this is something that's impacted every single school district. And across the state as a whole, the amount of money that New Hampshire's been able to reclaim has just plummeted. Sad.
Dan, did you have a question or comment?
I do. Two comments. One, it would not surprise me that the change in the regulations and the administration was due to an audit, and the auditors from the LBA probably made some comment, but that's just my own opinion, it's not based in fact. I do have a question for Scott. Can you remind me when the second billing to the other LEA is going to happen?
It was done at 4:30 tonight.
Okay, you're the man. So when we see next month's revenue report, we'll see an actual year-to-date receipt that's going to go higher?
Yes, sir. And Laura did the tuition calculation today, so she just sent it to me, and Tori, Tori reviews it on behalf of the board as well, so, the New Boston Board, I should say. So yes, sir, you will see that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Scott?
I did have a question. Was the donation, a targeted donation?
From the class?
The 4,500?
I don't know, Denise, I'm trying to think if I have that. Hold on, I have it in my folder here.
Mrs. McCann, do you know?
I do not.
Just give me one second, I think I have that.
Just curious, it's not really important, but I was just curious.
I think it's going to be a subscription for Quicken or Excel for every student. That was my preference, but, let's see. All right, so just, I'll just read to you, they did donate monies for picnic tables outside of the high school. And so initially, they had over 70, almost $7,200, of which they bought picnic tables. And let me see. No, it's not, it's not, it doesn't state where they wanted to go.
All right, does anyone else have any questions on the revenue before we move on? Scott, was there anything else?
Yeah, just also on the expense side, we just wanted to let you know, you see that every month, and we also are trending as I expected. So when I built, I was talking to the superintendent this afternoon, when we built what we felt our unassigned fund balance would be, it's trending, you know, in that, in that direction to meet those targets. We're seeing some reduced transportation costs, we're seeing other costs because we're not doing certain things, they're less. Unlike last year, I'm not projecting that we're going to have a lot of money left over in the teacher substitute line. So if you remember last year, because we were totally remote, there was a lot left over there. I think if anything, we're going to exhaust our $270,000 for teacher substitutes. Keep in mind that we're paying at a higher rate, and I just anticipate that, that that's going to happen. So just be mindful of that. At your next board meeting, I think it's your next one, maybe it's the one after that, Megan Bizarro, your food service director, and Laura are compiling what that's going to look like for food service, because as you know, with school and a hybrid model, we are not getting food service receipts because a lot of that comes from al of carte. So just like you had to help the food service at the end of last year, we're going to give you projections in a future board meeting on what that's going to look like, and that's going to be some change. The good news is that there is, the USDA is in the process of figuring out how, they're going to be giving money to school districts to help subsidize last year's losses. I just don't know what that is, but that's a bit, a bit of good news. But other than that, you know, I think we're in a fairly good position, you know, to hit those targets. This year, we have just had to cobble a lot of things together. We could not find different positions, so we had to use a lot of contracted services, so lines are like all over the place, to be quite candid with you. We have negatives in many lines, but then we have positives in others because of predominantly staffing.
Thank you, Scott. Go ahead, Ellen.
The substitute line, that is over even though we're not able to fill all the subs.
What I'm saying is, I believe by the end of the year, we'll either have expended it, or we might, we might be in the red.
So that tells me that the next budget cycle is not, and they cut it.
Correct.
So that tells me that we need, we're going to need to propose to increase it above what?
Yeah.
Plus what they cut it.
You know, Jared was at those meetings, he defended that for a long time, and it happened, but what that means is that come next year, hopefully when the budget gets adopted, we'll have to, you know, be mindful of that line. More than likely, we're going to have to budget, transfer money into that line. It's not going to be adequate.
Budget season, yeah.
And then budget season, it's, you know, the 270 is not a sustainable number under normal circumstances.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else before we move on? All right, thank you, Scott.
All right.
Budget committee report, Jared?
There was no budget meeting last month, as there are no changes to the school or the town's proposed budget. There is nothing scheduled on the books before the election in March. I assume that there will probably be a meeting after the election, once the members are set, but until that time, there's nothing in the books right now.
Thank you, Jared. Policy review, we have not met in February, but we do have a meeting on March 8th at 5:30, and that is a remote meeting. C and A?
We have not met since our last meeting. We have a meeting scheduled also on March 8th at 7:00 PM at the SAU, excuse me, we're not at the SAU, that will be remote also.
All right, thank you, Jenny. Teacher attendance report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, a number of things to share with the board. First of all, I wanted to let everyone know that as a function of COVID cases, we had temporarily shut down the hockey program. So we had what we have preliminarily defined as a cluster of cases, which is more than three cases that are related, and we shut the program down. I had a meeting with all of the hockey families, and all of the hockey players and the coaches on Zoom, and challenged them to come up with new mitigation measures that they think may increase the safety of the program. The families were terrific, the student athletes did a very nice job, they came up with some really great ideas, and the captain of the team, his name is Grady Critchey, and since, since the meeting we had, he wrote me a very nice letter advocating for the program, and since then has scored nine goals in two games. So I think it's fair to say that Grady didn't want the season to end, and Grady and the rest of the team is playing with a lot of fire. So we're glad and we're hopeful that they'll be able to continue and finish their season. Our food service program tonight, just tonight, one night, gave about 3,400 meals to local families. So if you just pause and think about how incredibly hard Megan Bizarro, our terrific food service director, and her staff are working to be able to provide meals for our community, it's really a remarkable number. We're talking calendar now, changing gears to next year's school calendar. The state of New Hampshire, even though it's very late in the process, has recommended school districts to change our February vacation to February 28th through March 2nd because there was a conflict with the Massachusetts Vacation Week. And I think I speak for most New Hampshire residents when I say that we like to ski without Massachusetts residents during February vacation. So when we have our final discussion of the calendar, that change has been made. We are still working closely with the Manchester School District to try to coordinate the vocational schedule for the Manchester School of Technology, they have not finished their calendar yet. So more will be coming with that. We sent letters to members of the general court, our senator, and our state reps who attended our meeting last month, so again, we appreciate their participation. I wanted to let the board know that Mr. Gross and I have spoken, and we are recommending to get the building committee back together and to start that work again. It may be something that we consider as a remote-only meeting approach, just given the number of people, our ability to use breakout rooms and Zoom and have subcommittees meeting concurrently, so we are recommending that. And I'm also recommending that we get the stipend committee back going. Mrs. Kohler is here this evening for our presentation, but she's been an active participant in that, and we will be giving some guidance to that committee, asking them to get back to their, their work as well. A question that's come up a number of times is, how are our students doing, and how do we know? We know that last year, the state eliminated the state assessment that we did. This year, we are still planning on doing the state assessment, but I've asked Mrs. Berry if she could work with principals and curriculum coordinators and consider doing a presentation in the May timeframe to give an update of how our students are doing academically. And I think that that will be important for us to continue to keep our eyes on. In terms of new development, I've talked to you about the Woodland Village Development, which is 74 one- and two-bedroom units. There's also another one that's happening on a much smaller scale. Five new lots are being subdivided on Montalona, which is up in the grassmire section, so that's happening. I believe the planning board might have heard public comment on this last week. We wanted to let you know that we've started having some conversations with our entire administrative team, looking at the next evolutionary phase of public education, and this is kind of a, about a 40,000-foot view, but when we think about the changes that have come into public education as an outcome of the pandemic, at the end of the pandemic, when things get back to normal, what do we keep? What do we get rid of? What are things that we continue to use? What are software products or programs that we want to continue? What are things that we want to eliminate? So that's a kind of a large conversation, but we've been having those conversations, and we'll plan to have more to come over the next several months, but I wanted the board to know that all of your administrators are planning that. The other thing that we're planning is, and again, we're at the beginning stages of this, but we know students have and will continue to lose ground academically because they have not benefited from a full in-person model, and we're in the early stages of developing a remediation-for-all type approach for anyone who wants to have remedial support services. This could be after-school homework support, it could be individual tutoring. We're looking at a number of options, but this is something that we think is going to be important, and we will- and we will put something together that our families will be able to access, likely in the summertime as well as next school year. I've reported out to the board on the Commission to Study School Funding. I wanted to let you know that there are two webinars that are being hosted by that group. And one is February 17th, which is this Wednesday at 4:00 PM. And the other is Tuesday, February 23rd. And this is something that's being shared with school boards, budget committees, municipal leaders, et cetera. And there's going to be a presentation, if anyone's interested in the information, we can, if you want to let Mrs. Moore know, we'll send you the, the information and you can register. But we're, we're going to see if we're able to attend, Scott and I have actually been pretty busy in terms of legislation. And I would share in terms of legislation, there have been a number of bills that Scott and I have opposed and have both spoken about, including education freedom accounts. And this is something that is essentially a voucher type program. And I understand that there are a lot of people who support this. But anything fundamentally that takes money out of the system that pays for adequacy is going to be problematic for school districts. So allowing students who attend private schools to take $3,700 and put it towards their tuition, anyone who's a homeschooler to take that money and pay for internet service or computers or gas to go on field trips, whatever their choices may be, is concerning to us because we believe fundamentally, we are already not receiving a constitutionally adequate amount of money. So that's something that Scott and I have been active on. There are hundreds and hundreds of bills that pertain to education that are making their way through committee right now. A number of schools on school, bills on school finance, school funding, special education, just there's a lot going on. If you're interested, if you don't get the legislative update from the School Boards Association, that's a good place to look. But lots of good stuff going on, we're all looking forward to vacation next week. So I think the teachers and all the staff could really use a break, I think the kids could use a break. Hopefully the weather will be nice and people can try to get outside and enjoy a little bit of winter weather. And speaking of the weather, the weather is not great this evening. We're anticipating a change over to freezing rain with a, a massive warm air system that's going to move aloft and it's going to change the precip into sleet and freezing rain. And unfortunately, the ground and the surfaces are all frozen and cold at this point. So I do think tomorrow morning will be a little bit of a tricky call. I don't want to be in the habit of making the call the night before unless it's a very easy call. And this is one for me that we need to get up and, you know, a, a degree or two up or down makes a big difference. Sometimes systems move north or south and so we'll get up and, and deal with that early. But looks like a couple of potential weather systems this week before we get to vacation. And that's all I have.
Ellen, I saw your hand up.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Ellen.
And it's not what you think. The 23rd was the webinar on what topic?
The 23rd is a webinar on the Commission to Study School Funding, which was established by the general court last year. And they released their final report on December 1st of 2020.
Okay, now through the New Hampshire School Board Association, I just received, maybe yesterday or today, the webinar on the reopening guidelines.
That's different.
This Wednesday, from 3:00 to 4:00, and I was able to register for it. Will we also get notified about the 20, the one on the 23rd so we can register or?
Yeah, we can send that out, I'm not sure if the School Boards Association is sending that out. I actually, I got it directly from the, the Commission to Study School Funding.
Okay, and could I request, and you're probably already considered, going to do it, but the change that we've done to the snow day being remote and all the Zoom that goes with it and everything, can we have a review in the spring after winter, after we've done it a few times, I'm assuming, and get teacher feedback on it and parent feedback on it? Not just what, what they think of it, but number of kids who actually do the work or the percent of children who don't do the work? And the pros and cons and how we might need to adjust it? I just keep hearing from people that a lot of parents are having a lot of issues with the amount of time on Zoom that kids are required to do in the course of that day at a specific time and, you know, family and all that kind of stuff. So I would just ask if we could do a review and maybe see how we can improve upon it?
How about once the crocuses come up?
Whenever.
Is that optimistic enough for everyone?
There you go. But thank you.
Indeed, thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Jared, I saw your hand up.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Just a question, with the changes that are going on in Manchester for their school system, about combining the Manchester School of Technology with other, you know, other things and school closures, how plugged in are we into at least what's going on over there and how that affects our students or our curriculum? Because I know that we talked about it from a calendar standpoint, I just didn't know if we understood some of the complexities that are going on and how it might affect our students and our plans.
Yeah, that's a good question. Since Mrs. McCann is in the back row, I might ask, Kim, do you have any sense of the planning and what's? I, I can tell you that I, I do periodically speak with the superintendent. He and I have not talked about MST or the potential changes, but why don't we see if Mrs. McCann has anything to share?
Yeah, Joyce Lewis is in regular contact with the administrative team at the Manchester School of Technology. She has regular communication with them about their planning, about, as, as some of you may be aware, their ability to hire teachers for different programs. They recently had to close one of the programs after an extended vacancy in the teaching position. So there's a lot of dialogue that happens on a regular basis with them. We're in the process now of accepting applications from our students for next year, so they've already started that planning process.
Kim, Kim, I think the big one would be, do you know if they've eliminated any programs? So I, I think if, you know, are they still offering the same options for our students?
For the most part, and again, it's staffing dependent. So the program that was just closed mid-year was their game design program. They were not able to find someone to take that over.
Popular ones, yeah.
Unfortunately, yeah, so that is one that we just, with the start of second semester, transitioned students back into elective options here, worked with them to find some other options between Velax. And Joyce has also worked with some of them with the local community colleges and some of the programs that are offered there. But for the most part, their programming has remained steady. The biggest challenge continues to be, as it is in, in many schools, the ability to hire, especially given how specialized the programs are and the instructor needs are.
I appreciate that question, Jared, and if, if I have the occasion, I'll speak to the superintendent and just ask him to keep us in the loop if there are any MST changes. And, and the big thing for me would be programs, if they started to eliminate programs.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Terry.
Yeah, just a comment, I think the recommendation to start up the building committee is a good one. I spoke with a couple of members from the committee that were wondering when that might come to fruition again. Certainly there's some concern over the recent developments with Woodland and some of the other places. So on top of what we already knew before, so. It's a great idea.
Thank you, Terry, and.
You were talking about doing that after the March election.
Yeah, we were talking about waiting until after the election and then, and particularly, you know, not knowing what's going to happen with Mr. Stetson, if he's going to be relocating, not relocating. So I, I think we'll need to look at the structure of the committee. You know, do we still want to have the three subcommittees? Do we still need them? And I, I think what we're going to need though is, you know, depending on Scott and my schedule, you know, to have someone who can run the Zoom meetings and, and be able to, to help facilitate some of that would be, would be a good thing for us as well. So we'll, we'll plan to get that back together and we'll have to reach out and, you know, see who we can still keep and if we need to reengage with the community. But, you know, clearly, our building needs, particularly at the elementary level, are significant. And, you know, when you think about something like a global pandemic and you realize that we don't have a single classroom in all of Bartlett and all of Maple Ave that meet the minimum required square footages for elementary school classroom, not one classroom in both schools. And New Boston only has three.
Only has three.
And two of them are kindergarten classrooms and the other is the art room. So we have, as we all know, we have space needs issues.
Question.
Go ahead, Dan.
Brian, what about the new portables that we just, a couple of years ago, put at Bartlett and a little while ago at Maple Ave? Did, did they not meet the square footage of?
We, we put portables that had similar class sizes. So the, for example, the quad unit at Maple Ave, we couldn't have gotten four classrooms that were all of that size. So we stuck with similar sizes to what the building already had. In retrospect, should we have gone as large as we probably could have? Maybe, it wouldn't have allowed us to pull off the four classrooms at Maple Ave, but those units, we kept similar sized classrooms.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else before we move on? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, so this brings us to old business. At the last board meeting, we had some first read policies. So tonight, we're going to discuss each one at a time, given questions, concerns. We'll talk about it and then at the next board meeting on March 2nd, it will be second read and with the assumption that those are motion made to move forward. So we're going to go one at a time. The first one is policy DJB.A. This is our credit card. The red and yellow was originally what we had put in. When that came for first read, extra language was requested, so went back to the subcommittee. And that gray and blue is what Scott came up with for the additional language. Does anybody have any questions, comments before we move on? No, Dana? Everybody good? All right, so we'll do this again March 2nd for a second read. The next one is EBAA. Use of video and audio systems, as you can see, we did a lot of work. We changed things. I do want to let you know at the, at the back, on the back page, first paragraph, second, uh, second line, the following purposes is not, is is going to be changed to are. And that was, that was the only grammatical change we saw. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this? Go ahead, Jared.
It might, I remember reading this last time and I don't know where it would be, but one of the questions that I always have is the authority to provide information that is non, provide information to state agents or police officers that we do not actually give? So do we have to go through a warrant process? I guess what is the process that we'll use if police officers ask for video of our staff?
If, if they're investigating a crime and say we have an assault, there's a fight that happens in the hallway, that's, that sort of thing, Jared?
Yeah.
So if they're doing an investigation of a crime that, that occurred on campus, we would give them access to an incident that occurred as part of their investigation.
And what process do they need to go through, other than just asking us?
Typically, they would ask us in a formal capacity. We typically don't have them, you know, subpoena or, you know, do a warrant, you know, any kind of a formal process request through the court system.
Isn't that written in through state schools?
Yeah, we, we also, we have a memorandum of understanding with the police department, so some of those things are also included in there. Because we have two SROs.
Okay, thank you.
Jared, are you good?
It's an answer. I'm good.
Go ahead, Ellen.
I think there's something that, and I know it's a question of mine when we get to it, might be on JICDR, Jared, that might also impact what you're thinking of.
So is everybody good with this policy as presented? Okay, so we'll do that March 2nd. All right, the next one is JFAB. You can see the yellow is what we changed at the subcommittee after this came back before, trying to get everybody's feeling on this. So this is admission of non-resident students, so if a senior leaves Goffstown during their senior year, the question is whether they pay tuition. So we're giving them some time ahead of time, they wouldn't start until the year 2022 and then we have some additional language in here.
Yeah, oh, Reta, sorry, go ahead.
And we can ask questions.
Absolutely, that's what we're here for.
I'm, I'm looking at number four and it's, and I'm trying to understand this. It says, non-resident seniors who move out of the school district. I mean, if they're non-resident, aren't they already out of the school district?
True, this was, yeah, we were trying, well, because it goes with number three, with the non-resident. So we can play with that, but it was if they left at the end of the year, we were trying to give like a 30-day waiver, like we do with non-residents coming in.
You know Heather?
Yeah, go ahead, Dan, because I know you were working on this one.
Yeah, I think if, um, this will help, Reta, if we take the word move and make it past tense, it makes that sound better and makes it reason better. Non-resident seniors who moved out of the school district 30 days prior.
Okay.
Because they are non-resident seniors, so.
Right.
Does that make more sense?
Go ahead, Reta.
Yeah.
Okay, did you have something else?
Yeah. So I would suggest we make that change.
All right, I just did. Thanks, Dan.
So just a follow-up question, and this is, you know, just maybe a scenario to help me understand. So let's say a senior moves out 45 day or days prior to the end. They don't have the ability to pay, so they would move to a new school district 45 days before they graduate. Are they going to be able to complete their schooling at the new district? Or is this an incident where the superintendent might say, we'll pay for that student to finish? I'm just wondering, logistically, you know, if they have the money, they'll pay, but if they couldn't pay, could they really complete their education? Or would they be forced to kind of go into summer?
You mean for the 15 days, because they can still stay in Goffstown, that's not a question.
If they can pay.
If, well, yeah, we're saying after next year, that there will be a tuition responsibility on either the parent or sometimes the superintendents can talk.
Yeah, the other option, Reta, would be the provisions that are available under RSA 1933, which would include best interest and manifest educational hardship. If you've got, I mean, realistically, you've got a senior who's graduating and three weeks before graduation, the family has to move for whatever reason. I think that we would do everything we could to help that family, to help that student and would likely find a way to have them finish with us or minimally, you know, issue our diploma to them. So if they, if there was a way, we would, we would find a way to help families.
And that's what that extra paragraph was for, to try to help at the end if they were leaving, that they could still stay and they could have tuition waived.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Are you good?
Yep.
Okay, Ellen, I saw your hand. No, you're good? All right, anyone else? Questions, comments? So is everybody good with this? The way it's presented?
And these have all those grammar changes for lack of another term?
Yeah, we haven't gotten to the next one yet, this is just JFAB. So what you see is how it would be, all the yellow is all the new stuff. So this will come back March 2nd. All right, so the last one, JICDR. When it came to the subcommittee, we just looked at D. Since then, we've, were informed, there are a ton of grammatical changes. So this is going back to the subcommittee on our March 8th. But before we did that, I wanted to give you guys an opportunity, any questions or comments, especially on that yellow part. But this is 11-page policy that we're going to go through and fix it and bring it back to you. But before we did, I just wanted to make sure everybody was good. Ellen?
Yeah, the word immediately is used, I'm looking at the first.
Where are you?
First paragraph, page two, first paragraph.
Oh, page two.
Just because of personal experience in reporting and needing to speak with police and all that as a school staff member, immediate means within five minutes or by the end of the school day or?
Were these part of your questions you sent to me?
Um.
Because if that was. Because if that was, we'll get those answers to you.
Oh, okay. Okay, yes, I did. I don't have a new one, so I sent that to you.
Because I know you emailed me a bunch of questions. Yep, yeah, when we get together with the subcommittee.
Okay, very good, then, I'm fine.
No, if you have any other questions, you guys can always email me.
The other one was page two, the third paragraph. It says, "It shall be permissible for any law enforcement officer and any school administrator to exchange information relating only to these various infractions." I know I've had experience where they had to speak to the staff person who witnessed something. So that would not be the administrator. Is staff not allowed to speak?
Oh, sure. If a staff member witnessed a crime or was part of an investigation, they would absolutely be permitted to speak with police and to...
So should that, allow that somehow in this paragraph? Because, and maybe I'm misinterpreting what it says.
Well, maybe you can take that up when you...
And it also says any...
Yeah. Is that one, was that also one of your questions?
I think I did include it.
All right, so all of your questions will be reviewed and answered after the subcommittee. Anybody else? All right, so see you in none. You'll see this again for another first read after March 8th, subcommittee. So we are done with that, and now we have a presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
And I'd like to recognize all of our folks who are here this evening as part of this presentation. We've got Kim McCann from Goffstown High School, Mrs. Pischka, the principal from Maple Ave, Mrs. Stoyl, the principal from Glen Lake, Mrs. Berry is back there in the back, Mrs. Kohler, the principal from Mountain View, and Dr. Athena Chisholm, who is a reading specialist among many, many other talents at Maple Ave. So I'm gonna have, they're gonna be part of the presentation, but let me start with a review of the numbers and the data. And I do know that this is a little challenging for people at home to see. I think that GTV has a plan for how to be able to see, and actually, it might be good if I had moved out of the way for them as well. So I'll come back here, and, no, then I'm gonna lose the microphone. Maybe I'll just try to move over a little bit, because I know he's got the camera right there. So we're gonna start with looking at the data, and the first place I'm gonna begin, this is at Johns Hopkins website, and the numbers right now, we have 109,128,000 cases. The United States has 27,690,000. And interestingly, if you go here, this is a tab that says "Critical Trends," they have a state-by-state analysis that is something that I pay very close attention to. And the color, I recognize that the color might be difficult to see coming out of GTV, and I did want to let everyone know that I'm planning to do a new video at the end of the week, so I'm gonna go through kind of a shorter version of this on the video. So anything that anyone misses, I'll try to recap.
Is there a light you can turn off?
Adam, Roden had put the lights on, they knew I was gonna do this, so I think, I think he has it as good as it's gonna get.
Okay, perfect.
The color of each of this is, so this is a schematic of the United States, and you can see that the color is either a greenish color or a slightly pink-type color. Green indicates that cases are going down, and pink indicates that cases are going up, and the more red or the brighter they are, the more significant. So you can see right now, you've got a couple of states, South Carolina, Delaware, New York, Nebraska, that are in the pink, and New Hampshire is just slightly pink. And you can see the reason for that, is there's a slight uptick that's happening right there. If I look at New Hampshire data, right now, the positivity rating is 4.4%, so that's a good thing. We're still remaining, the state as a whole, is 370 per 100,000. And it's important for everyone to remember, the definition of substantial community spread is any number that's 100 or larger. So we're still hovering around that 400 level. But if I come up here, and I click on counties, this will show every New Hampshire county, slowly. This will show the counties, and at this point, every county in the state continues to be in the red in the level of substantial community spread. COAS, which was having problems earlier, is now among the lower, 240, and Hillsborough County is at 344, with the City of Manchester at 451, and the City of Nashua at 390. So we continue to be in the substantial community spread level. If I click on the schools tab, and then I look at here, where it says the current number of clusters, according to the data from the state, there are six current clusters in schools in the state. One of them is at Goffstown High School, as I already mentioned, for the hockey program. The town numbers, and this is really hard to see, but this is the dashboard from DHHS, Goffstown is currently listed at 32 cases. And there was quite a while that we were at or near or above 100. So the fact that we're now down below 50, I think is very positive, and New Boston is identified as being back in the 1 to 4 range, so they're even under 4, which I think is also very encouraging. If I click on our homepage, and I go down and look at our numbers, I can click on summary data, and this will pull up, we've had 177 cases. We have nine active and 168 that are recovered. You can see that we continue to have cases week after week, and we send all of those notifications out, and just continue to have a significant number of cases that we can consistently have to deal with. At this point, we've had three probable clusters, the first being at Glen Lake, the second being at Bartlett, and the third being at the high school as part of the athletic program. The next document that I'm gonna pull up, this is from the Bureau of Infectious Disease Control, and this was just sent out on January 26th. And this is considerations for transitioning between instructional models. And if I go down here, the way that we are using their model to identify the level of community transmission is to look at the seven-day PCR test positivity rating, and right now, we've just moved into minimal, so that's a good sign, that's pretty low. The testing positivity rate is influenced by a number of factors, including the fact that the University of New Hampshire is reopened, and they're testing all of their students twice a week. Their numbers are part of the data, so that's just important to know. The number of new infections per 100,000, as I said, 370, so we are considered substantial and continue to be substantial. And using this model, you identify your highest number of the two, and that identifies your level of community transmission. So according to the state's own metric, our level of community transmission is substantial. Now we come down and look at the level of school impact. And they've identified three factors or three criteria for us to look at: transmission within the school facility, student absenteeism, and staff capacity to conduct classes and school operations. And let me take them one by one. Transmission within the school goes from zero on the low side to high over here, which is two or more unrelated clusters, which is what's considered an outbreak. So from low to high, you go from zero or minimal, no cases, to outbreak. So we're not in the outbreak category. We would be solidly in this medium. This says one cluster in the school, we've had three. Student absenteeism for us is, has not been a factor, and it's actually something that we have not seen. Our in-class days are so precious, I think that we haven't had a lot of students miss them. All of our schools, except for the high school, are well below 15%, and the high school only sporadically has had slightly over 15% absenteeism. Staff capacity to conduct classes, we have identified that as critical, and we'll continue to look at that. And I'm gonna go through, in a couple more slides, a more local version of this. So then in total, they have this decision-making matrix that allows us to see what the recommended model would be. So let me pause there, and I'm gonna come back to my presentation, because we've made a local version of this. And again, I recognize that this is a little hard to see, but this is the exact same thing I just showed you. Our level of community transmission in terms of the positivity rating is in the green, it's less than 5%, but the number of new infections continues to be in the red. For the level of school impact, I have identified us as being in the medium count when we've had more than one cluster and continued positive cases, but we certainly don't have an outbreak, so we would be identified as medium or yellow here. Student absenteeism is less than 15%, so we would be, we would be green. And then I've added, the board has heard me talk about the significance of space, and how space impacts our ability to not only run a hybrid model, but the day-to-day operations of all of our schools. So what I've done is I added a space, school space section for each school, and Glen Lake is in the yellow, which would be considered strained. Bartlett is in the red, which would be critical, or space is a significant factor. Maple Ave, it would be in the red, critical, space is a significant factor. Mountain View, yellow, space is a moderate factor. Goffstown High School, in the green, space is not a factor. The school's capacity is considerably higher than our current levels of attendance. When you take our student population and remove all of the remote-only students, the number of students we have here, we are more than able to handle. And New Boston is also in the red. So the level of school impact is considered red, the level of community transmission is considered red, and according to this decision-making matrix, we should be remote. I would submit to the board that I don't necessarily agree with these descriptors, I don't agree with the interpretation of them, I don't think we should be remote, I think we've clearly demonstrated that we have successfully implemented a hybrid model. But I just wanted, people have asked me, "How do you make these decisions?" The Bureau of Infectious Disease gave us this model, I've expanded it a little bit to include space, which was lacking from the model, and people have said, "Well, there's another elementary school that's fully reopened." And I would say, I'm sure that's true. In fact, we know that's true, and if there are schools that have 900 or 1,000 or 1,100 square-foot classrooms and have 16 or 17 kids in them, they could absolutely be open and still have six-foot spacing between all of the students. Remember, most schools have declining enrollment. That's not been our example, that's not been what we've lived through, particularly at the elementary level. And in terms of space, here's the floor plan for Bartlett, and this is a little bit of an eye chart, but let me, the reason I gave you the colors is so you could see the impact. This is the front section of the school, and all of these classrooms are yellow, they're between 700 and 775 square feet. The blue is between 650 and 700, so you can see 1, 2, 3, 4. The pinkish, purple, lilac, whatever color that is, those are between 600 and 650, and the orange is between 5 and 600. This shows you how small these classrooms are, and I can't underscore enough how much of a challenge it is to have small classrooms and schools that are overcrowded when you have hundreds of students moving through the doors every day. Here's Maple Ave, and again, same color schematic. The green is the, are the largest classrooms, this would be 775 to 800 square feet. So we have, these would be the four biggest classrooms that are still under 800 square feet. The yellow color is 700 to 775. So you can see, the majority of the classrooms at Maple Ave are in that size range. The blue, 650 to 700. The orange, this one here, 5 to 6, and the purples are 3 to 5.
So Brian, to do comparison, if you built a new elementary school, what is the code for a classroom?
The code is 900 square feet for a regular elementary classroom. Kindergarten, the requirement is 1,000 feet, and for high schools, the size is 800. So younger children have larger classrooms, and unfortunately, that's not the case for us. The next one is New Boston. Anecdotally, you might be interested to see, they're in the exact same place. They only have two classrooms that are 900 to 1,000, and those are the two kindergarten classrooms that they built when Goffstown built Glen Lake. At that time, there was 75% building aid for any kindergarten-related projects. I've talked about staffing, and when I've said that our staffing levels are and have been at critical levels, I have consistently shown the boards this chart. You're looking here at the delta between the orange line and the gray line. You can see that this is tightened up a little bit, and I wanted to let the board know the reason for that. This originally reflected our ability to fill substitute positions. We added into our MOU with teachers that if a teacher had a planning period, we could pay them to substitute in a classroom. So we have changed and tightened this up, this is no longer a report that we're able to run from our system, it's all hand-done. But you can see that when we do that, we tighten up a little bit. Our need was 354, and our fill was 286. When we go down and look at support staff, the delta is even a little bit bigger. So we are pulling paras, we're pulling other professional staff to cover classrooms when we need it, and this is just something that you need to be aware. All of the administrators in this room are covering classes and doing duties every single day, they're all pitching in, and everyone is working together. We've been able to make the staffing levels work within our current model. So let's talk about that. So if we think about our hybrid model, and we're in Phase 2, and we built a hybrid model that was maybe a little more, I would say sophisticated than what some other districts have done. We actually did three different phases within it, looking at 25% capacity, 50% capacity, and 75% capacity. We are in the 50%, but with our priority return students, we're probably slightly higher. We're between, I would say, 50% and 75%. We've had two shutdowns, one at Glen Lake and one at Bartlett, three clusters to date, as I've already stated. Students on-site have benefited from small classes and increased teacher support. This is something that, when we think about how are our students doing, this is a difficult one to quantify, but the ability for teachers to have smaller hybrid groups in front of them and have a lot of individualized attention has been beneficial from a teaching and learning perspective. Our mitigation measures thus far have been successful: cleaning, sanitizing, ventilation, masks, distancing, et cetera. And to date, we've seen no student-to-adult transmission, zero. Apart from the two clusters that we had, one being at Bartlett and one at Glen Lake, we've seen no in-school transmission, and we had one probable student-to-student transmission way back in the early days of the pandemic, and that actually was in New Boston. We're still not convinced, but it looked probable. So overall, we've seen that we're not seeing in-school transmission, and we've had no evidence of any students infecting any adults. We've seen adult-to-adult infections, and we've seen adult-to-student infections, but we've not seen any students infecting adults. It's important for us to know that there are new strains of the virus, and right now, they're tracking three, and they have names like P.1.1.1, which is the UK strain, there's also a South Africa strain, and there's also a Brazilian strain. The South Africa strain has been found in New Hampshire, it was in Maine last week, and many epidemiologists are predicting that this is going to be widely transmitted within the United States. And what we know about this new strain, this is coming from a CDC article that just came out just two weeks ago, that the new variant is able to spread more quickly, and the ability to cause either more mild or more severe disease is what they're starting to see in the UK. So originally, they thought that the new variant was not as dangerous, but they're seeing it's either less significant or more significant in people. So I think we really don't know the full scope of this at this point. It does look like the vaccines are effective on these variants, but I think it's important for all of us to know and to remember, the virus is and will continue to evolve and mutate, and the strains and the implications will continue to be a challenge for us. Vaccine. I want to make it clear to everyone, the vaccine is not required, will not be required in students or staff unless something changes coming from either Washington or Concord. It would certainly not be our inclination that people are required to get the vaccine. Certainly, vac... Certainly vaccines for staff would increase safety and comfort levels as we look at and consider more time instructionally. And I wanted to let the board know, we're working very closely with the Manchester Public Health Department. And we have been planning for an onsite clinic for all of our faculty. So this is something that we are in the queue with. Our two fire chiefs, Chief McDonald in New Boston and Chief Allard in Goffstown, have been working with us. They're going to contribute, they're going to provide paramedics, they're going to provide other supports. And we're working right now, all of our nurses are interested in being able to help us run the clinic. And we're working on all the logistical pieces. We've identified all of our employees, the numbers, including contracted services, bus drivers, anyone who's under the K-12 system, which would include school board members, is part of Phase 2A. And we have rostered the numbers to hopefully allow us to be able to get into the very beginning of Phase 2A, working in conjunction with the Manchester Public Health Department. This would be a good time for me to thank Phil Alexikos, who has just been an incredible partner for us, working very closely with Mrs. Barry. And our two great fire chiefs have both been tremendous assets for us. I want to talk a little bit about beliefs. And I don't want anyone to ever question where my ideology is. I believe that kids need to be in school more. Younger kids in particular. We must continue to monitor safety. And safety has to be a primary focus as we consider increased time for our students in school. Increasing time or the number of students in school increases risks. So we're at a point right now where the cases are going down. The transmissibility occurring in school isn't happening. And we're getting to the point where it's going to be time to start thinking about and planning for our next moves to get more students in school more time. And I would submit, there are negative impacts that are a result of kids not being in school. Mental health, lost academic or limited academic growth, routines, habits, connections, all of those things show me that we need to get kids back in school more. So one of the fundamental questions that we have to consider as we think about our ability, particularly in our elementary schools with small classes, that we need to consider is social distancing and physical distancing expectations. And I evaluated, and I thought a lot about this. 3-foot spacing, 3 to 6-foot spacing, 6-foot spacing. And as we do a lot of things in this SAU and in this school district, instead of this being a question that we just consider in passing and then move on, I asked a group of really smart, talented people who happened to all be sitting in the back of the room, with the exception of Mr. John Bridle, who's the Assistant Principal in New Boston. He was also part of this group. And I asked this group, and in particular, Dr. Chisholm kind of has led the way. The question that I asked is, what do we know about the rule, the role of 3-foot, 6, 3 to 6-foot or 6-foot spacing in the transmission of COVID-19? And I asked this group to form a research team, which they did, and to look at literature or any research that's available, as well as New Hampshire and other exemplars of how school districts are making these decisions and what the outcomes have been. So with this, I'm going to shift over to a presentation that Dr. Chisholm is going to come up and speak to. And the other principals that are here will all speak to this. But I've asked Athena, and again, if people don't know Athena, the board will remember Athena. She helped us when we did the athletics study. And part of the athletics study that we did included a comprehensive review of the literature, looking at what we could learn from research. And anytime you're getting into that level of work, you want Dr. Chisholm at the table. So I'm very pleased to introduce Athena Chisholm. And she will speak to, and I will advance slides as she tells me to. And we'll have her colleagues, our colleagues, get up and speak as well. Athena?
Thank you. Thanks for having me. It's a pleasure to be here. I know that Brian has just spoken about the new variants of the COVID-19 strains. And I want to first mention, I want to first mention that all of the research that I've done predates the new strains. So I think that's important to keep in mind. So what I'm going to share with you tonight are, is a tiny bit of the research that we've looked at, about studies, about what's happening in schools globally, nationwide, and to look in particular about information on the 3-foot or 6-foot spacing to keep kids and everyone safe in schools. So, oh, that is hard to see, isn't it? So, like I said, I'm going to be sharing with you a literary view of the research. One of the things that seemed to be a theme that came up over and over and over again, no matter what document I was looking at, was that schools do not seem to be super-spreaders when mitigation strategies are followed. Things that you're well aware of. Masks, social distancing, hygiene, ventilation, quarantine policies, contact tracing. And I picked out several studies globally and some studies nationwide to help illustrate that. But we do know that children do get COVID, and they can spread COVID. Outbreaks have happened with and without following the guidelines. There was an article in the British Medical Journal by Jones and others that tell us that many factors contribute to COVID-19 spread and the risk of transmission. How crowded a space is, the duration of contact, ventilation, distancing, properly fitting masks, type and level of group activity. And hearing all those other factors sort of helped me think about this in a slightly different way. An update in October from the World Health Organization reported that outbreaks at middle school and high schools were greater than in elementary schools. Studies have shown that younger children under age 10 are less susceptible to COVID-19 and less likely to spread it, although I read that that's still in ongoing, ongoing studies. The same article and others have shown that in schools, adult-to-adult transmission is more common than other avenues of transmission, which I think goes along very well with what Brian just spoke about. So the first question that we looked at was 3-foot versus 6-foot, and what the research says on social distancing. So where to turn to find that information? The experts. The American Academy of Pediatrics recommends following current public health guidelines, and that desks should be at least 3 feet apart and ideally 6 feet apart. Adults always 6 feet apart. Brown School of Public Health recommended 3 feet for younger learners, 6 feet for high schools when increased levels of community spread, combined with other measures, masking, hygiene, ventilation, quarantining and contact tracing, and where feasible, ongoing screening and testing for students and staff. The World Health Organization advocates maintaining 1 meter, which is 39.37 inches, between individuals with limiting number of the students in a class, limiting mixing of classes or cohorting, using physical barriers to support physical distancing, and many of the other mitigation strategies already mentioned. Also already mentioned in the last slide, the British Medical Journal and other sources tell us that many factors contribute to the risk of COVID-19 transmission. How crowded a space is, duration of contact, ventilation, distancing, properly fitting masks, and the type and level of group activity. New Hampshire Back-to-School Guidance recommends at least 3 feet apart, 6 feet preferred, and adults always 6 feet apart. The Center for Evidence-Based Medicine, summary found in their document, which I got from the COVID-19 School and Community Resource Library from Mass General Global Health, states that airborne particle sizes, duration of exposure and activity, and that with the risk of transmission falls as physical distance decreases. In some settings, 2 meters might be too close. Finally, also found in the guidance from Mass General, longer duration exposures may lead to increased risk. So lots of things to think about. So I'll share with you on the next slide, some of the global research. And there was a lot. I was very surprised. I went into this expecting that it would be difficult to find information. And I found quite the contrary. What I found was an overwhelming amount of information. But I tried to pick out a few studies that I think will speak to the in-school transmission of COVID-19. So the next area I explored was actually, what was actually happening in schools. I looked for research globally and nationally. And pretty soon, the principals will be speaking to what's happening in New Hampshire from schools that have fully opened. So I picked four global examples. Many of them have a lot of information from the spring. And most studies looked at transmission, how extensive it is, and at what grade levels it's more likely to occur. And how does the virus travel? Adult-to-adult, staff-to-staff, student-to-staff, student-to-student, et cetera. One study from Australia, which included 15 schools in 10 early childhood settings, from 12 children in 15 adult cases, they did contact tracing for 1,448 other individuals. And what they found was staff-to-staff transmission was the highest, at 4.4%. Staff-to-student, 1.5%. Student-to-staff, 1%. And student-to-student, 0.3%. So kind of going along, again, with what we found here. The highest transmission space, I guess, was staff-to-staff. An England study with a median daily attendance of 928,000 in a summer term identified 103 cases identified as staff-to-staff transmission, 10 cases student-to-staff, 55 cases, sorry, 10 cases student-to-student, 55 cases student-to-staff, and 19 cases staff-to-student. In that study, there were smaller class sizes, cohorting, distancing, not specified the distance, and mask use was also not specified. In Italy, a study done with single desks 1 meter apart, as 1 meter apart is part of their mitigation. In a hybrid model, if they couldn't maintain that 1-meter distance. There were 31,000 students with 48 cases involving 5 staff and 43 students that led to only 38 secondary cases, all of whom were students, and no other cases from the 5 staff. So very small numbers within a school setting with very little transfer. The final study that I'll share with you is from Norway. The study looked at confirmed COVID-19 cases from August to November. Masks were not required. The child-to-child transmission was 0.9% or 2 out of 234 children. And the child-to-adult transmission was 1.7% or 1 out of 58. And there were many, many, many more global studies. But they all kind of led to the same place, that what was happening in schools was not a lot of transmission. Onto the next slide. We'll look at four studies throughout the United States. These were cited often in a great deal of the research, so I looked at those. The first one was a study of two independent schools, identified in the research as School A and School B. School A was in the southeast and had 2,299 staff and students. School B was in the mid-Atlantic with 1,200 students. School A had 112 cases. The largest transmission was at a non-school sports event. School B had 25 cases for a total of 137 cases. Of those, they determined 69 were traceable. With 63 of those, 91% were non-school-based transmissions. And no transmission was believed to have occurred from student to staff. They had numerous mitigation strategies, including ongoing testing. And they were adhering to the 6-foot at School A and 5 to 6-foot of spacing at School B. The second study was from Wood County, Wisconsin, with 5,530 students and staff, involving 17K through 12 schools. During a period of high community transmission, 191 cases were found. Only seven were linked to in-school transmission, and no infections among staff found to be acquired at school. They also used 6-foot distancing inside at all times with cohesive students that did not mix. Staff 6 feet from others, and students with COVID, their siblings were excluded from school. Two more to tell you about. In North Carolina, operating in a hybrid model, there were 11 school districts with over 90,000 students and staff. 733 community-acquired cases, with 32 acquired in school. No cases of student-to-adult transmission. Extremely limited within-school transmission at secondary levels. Most cases were attributed to lack of mask use, and they did use 6-foot distancing. One final study in, from Michigan and Washington State, sought to see how schools contributed to community spread. So they were looking at a slightly different research question. Low to moderate community spread in-school models do not appear to contribute to COVID-19. But at high levels of community spread, in-person models are associated with increased spread of COVID-19 in the community. So that's a lot to think about and a lot to digest. There is so much more. It's incredible. But my biggest takeaway from it all is that there's a lot of data available, way more than I would have thought. And as daunting as that is, I think it will help to make well-informed decisions.
So the next part of our presentation, I might pause there before Athena leaves the almost podium, and just ask if there are any questions from board members? Anyone, anything that, that she can clarify or expand upon? All right. Thank you, Athena. So the next piece is, in addition to looking at the literature to seek to answer the research question, we also are pretty networked here in SAU 19 and in Goffstown. So by level, we had a number of districts that we reached out to. And Mrs. McCann, we're going to have her come up first and talk about what we found through the high school outreach that we've done.
We have a strong network of high school principals in the state who meet very regularly. We started about four or five years ago in the southern tier specifically. There were probably about 10 of us that would meet monthly from October to May. We'd go high school to high school each month. And we'd spend about an hour, hour and a half, talking about, you know, issues that were common to all of us. And when schools closed last year, we went right online. For about the first month, we met twice a week together, every morning, trying to figure out what we were doing, how we were going to do it, and support each other through that process. And that kind of trailed off over the spring months to once a week. And now we are down to twice a month. But we've continued to stay very connected and meet very regularly and talk about what we're doing in our schools, what's working, what's not. And so when we started this process, I reached out to the group. 17 of the high schools in the area responded and shared where they were at and what they were doing relative to distancing, as well as other mitigation protocols in their schools. Of the 17 who responded, I had the opportunity to speak directly with about three or four of the principals of some of the larger schools that are more similar to us. And what we found was that 12 of the 17 schools are using and have been using since they opened, the 3-foot model of distancing in their schools. Of those 12, half of them are operating in a hybrid. The other six are fully open. A couple that are operating in the hybrid are doing so more because even with 3 feet, they don't have the space in their classrooms for their class sizes. So needing to put 25 students in a room, even with the 3-feet option that they've chosen to use, would not get them to their class sizes. They don't have additional staffing. And they've defaulted to continuing in the hybrid model at this time. In speaking with these principals and some of the additional feedback we've gotten, what we found is that their experiences to date using the 3-feet distancing have really modeled ours here in Goffstown in terms of cases, contact tracing, quarantining. Couple of the schools also felt, even though they're fully open, they've actually had numbers that were either very similar to or lower than their surrounding schools. In part, hypothesizing that with students in school five days a week, under their protocols and under their supervision, they've had less opportunity for additional exposure. and under their supervision, they've had less opportunity for additional exposure, like some of the surrounding communities have seen. And they all continue to report as well that almost all of their cases are from outside exposure. Even the larger schools that have been fully open have shared that, you know, just as we do here, the administration does the contact tracing, and they have found little to no evidence, depending on the school, of transmission in the building. The biggest challenges that they have shared at this time is that it does take a little bit longer to do that contact tracing using the three-feet space as you're looking at classrooms, lesson plans a little bit more closely. And that when you do have a case, the likelihood of quarantining more students is a reality. But other than that, you know, it has really been pretty positive feedback from those schools, from their experiences. And they have, any of the schools that I spoke directly with have not found to date that the three-foot distancing has in any way impacted their ability to stay open.
Any questions for Mrs. McCann?
Those were the biggies.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to Mrs. Kohler, who did a very similar exercise with local New Hampshire middle schools. Mrs. Kohler?
Thank you. So yes, I worked very similarly to Kim and reached out to a whole bunch of middle school principals in the state. And I was able to have very long candid conversations with six New Hampshire principals that are right now fully open. Class sizes for those districts were capped between 18 and 21 for their in-person classes. And they did that based not only on their square footage that they had in their classrooms, but also based on the amount of students that they had in a full remote environment. Four of the schools that I spoke to had been using the three-to-six-foot social distancing model while they're in their fully open status. And two of them, because of the square footage in their school and the amount of students that they have in a full remote environment, were actually able to keep six feet of social distancing even though they're fully open. As Kim mentioned, their experiences to date matched what we've been doing with our contact tracing. One of the schools that is similar in size to Mountain View that I spoke with did have a week where they had over 100 students and staff in quarantine. And that was not necessarily because of cases in the school, but students who came to school or staff members that had been in close contact with somebody outside of school. So they did say what they were seeing inside their school for transmission and for positive cases was much different than what they were seeing in the community. Their community had high numbers. They weren't seeing as high numbers inside the school building. But it was impacting them because of close contacts outside of school. The largest impact that the administrative teams across all the schools that I spoke to was the contact tracing and the amount of time that it was taking. When you are looking at a three-foot radius, you have a lot more students that you're putting in quarantine, a lot more phone calls that you need to make. So that was one impact that they had discussed. Also, two of the middle schools that I spoke to, which I thought was interesting, that are using that three-to-six-foot distancing, they actually kept their quarantine at 14 days for close contacts, rather than going to 10, which we had moved to in the fall. But all of them that I had spoken to were, they did not regret going to fully open status and giving families those opportunities. They did say, though, that the numbers of remote students that they had helped impact that decision-making for the ability to be able to go fully open. And they also, a lot of the schools that I spoke to have very large classrooms. Most of the schools, their classrooms were a minimum of 800 square feet and went right up to 925 square feet. And, you know, Mr. Bulkey in the SAU has asked all of the principals to start looking at our own square footage. And I know that Mr. Bulkey shared the elementaries tonight, but that's something that I've started working on at the middle school level as well.
Any questions for Mrs. Kohler? Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
We will now move on to the elementary level. And Mrs. Pischka?
Good evening, everyone. So the elementary school principals, we put out a survey to our network, and we received 39 responses to that. 22 of them, of the respondents, are using the majority of in-person learning. Some, a few, three feet, but the majority, four feet to six feet. They report that there's little to no school transmission. Reduced class sizes are under 15, so we had asked that question, what are their numbers? Three schools took a planned break from Thanksgiving to Martin Luther King Day for at least a period, and then at least a period after each vacation. A school, one school has teachers instructing three groups synchronously. And a few schools have experienced limited impact with classes pivoting to remote learning due to staffing shortages. So 13 of those 39 schools are hybrid learning schools. All of those schools have three feet to six feet. The hybrid model varies depending on the school, we've found, and all strive for six feet. Students on campus learning increases. The space has been decreasing. Experience pivot to remote learning due to staffing shortages as well. And their goal is to keep their numbers to 12 if they can. We did find that there are four schools that replied to our survey that are fully remote, or, I'm sorry, fully open. And it's just for the K to two grade levels. The upper grades are using the hybrid model still. Three of the schools out of these four are three feet to five feet minimum, and one school at six feet. This model allows early intervention. Learners, of course, you know, the K, one and two students, to have more schooling, which is a goal for all of us. Developmentally appropriate expectations for the independent learning. And they are using, you know, obviously, measures to mitigate transmission, such as desk shields and mask wearing. So I did look at the four schools that are using, that are open, full, and they definitely are in the numbers similar to Bartlett's, but they are not the numbers that we have at Maple Avenue. However, you know, looking at that they did split their school and identified the early interventions, I think there's room for conversation at both schools about that, for first grade in particular.
Any questions for Mrs. Pischka? Mrs. Stoyl, anything to add from your perspective with respect to preschool, kindergarten, before we?
I think that...
We're going to need you to come to the mic, otherwise I can't hear you at home. Sorry.
I think as far as that goes, Suzanne covered what we got from other schools around. At this point, were you wanting us to talk more about the...
We'll jump to that in just a couple minutes, but just anything else?
There wasn't anything that was pulled out particular to preschool and kindergarten from that survey, except that some of those schools had brought back their primary students so that they could have early intervention before they brought back other grades.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Stoyl. So I'm going to jump back into my presentation. I don't have all that much more, but I thought it was really important. And again, I can't thank this impressive group enough that instead of just having discussions about, well, we could just change from three feet to, you know, from six feet to three feet. That's not a simple decision. And that decision is important in a significant way. And to give that the proper attention, we took the approach of looking at the literature, the review, as well as experiences from local school districts. So I think that the work that they've done, and by the way, I didn't share this, but Athena, all of the, she essentially took, I mean, 20-something pages of notes from all these articles that she read. I read her notes, and it was incredibly helpful for me to continue to learn more about the topic. So I appreciate that. So I had a request. I requested just to remind the board that each school has a reopening team that met throughout the summer, they met throughout the fall into the winter. And I asked all of the teams to begin evaluating moving to Phase 3 of our hybrid model and to have a focus on primary children being in school more. So for Maple Ave and Bartlett, that would be prioritizing grades one and two. For Mountain View, that would be prioritizing grades five and six. And for the high school, we're looking at a slightly different approach just based on the numbers. But I asked the teams to focus on logistics, to focus on challenges, and not to identify or to spend their time debating or discussing whether we should or shouldn't make a move to a less restrictive phase. So they were asked to focus on how would you do it, not whether you think we should or not. So thus far, I believe all of our teams have met at least one time since I've made this request, and they have identified a number of challenges, barriers, unintended consequences, need for furniture, equipment, et cetera. But I wanted the board to know that I made that request, and that has been ongoing. There are unintended consequences or challenges. And some of the things that the schools are contending with, I wanted to go, and actually, Kathy, why don't we have you start this part? We'll go in the reverse order this time. I asked the principals to think about sharing...
Yeah, I was waiting for you to...
I'm sorry, Jared. Go ahead.
Just as a question and a reminder, could you just remind the audience what Phase 3 is? I know it's different for each school system, but I think it's important as we continue forward what that means.
Sure. Thank you, Jared. So essentially, the three-faceted hybrid model that we developed, Phase 3 would be approximately 75% capacity being used. So when you think about Phase 1 was 25%, Phase 2 was 50%, that's where we are now. Phase 3 would be 75%. So when we think about our capacity, an example from an elementary classroom might be, if we were in Phase 1, students would be in one day a week. Phase 2, they would be in two days a week. Phase 3, they would be in three or four days a week. So that's kind of rough numbers, how we've conceptualized this. We look at the capacity of classrooms. And again, I've shared, and I will continue to share more examples of the challenges that we have at the elementary levels at Bartlett and Maple. But that's essentially the primary overview. So Kathy, you want to come up and talk a little bit about some of the questions, concerns, and challenges that we're beginning to contend with this as we're planning?
Thank you. So we've done a lot of talking, and I did want to say also that we've worked with Bartlett as well. Suzanne and then John Bridle and I have worked with Bartlett as well in getting their input as we go through this, so I didn't want to leave that out, that Mrs. Hjulhjel has been a part of all of this as well, giving us her thoughts. But for Glen Lake in particular, we've come up with a list of things that we need to address. As we look at space, we know that we do have bigger classrooms at Glen Lake. And the challenge that we find with adding more children into the room than what we have now, we've got a few challenges. We don't have enough furniture to have people sit with appropriate distancing for that. So looking at what we would need for furniture in order to accommodate that, and along with that, what are delivery times? Because that has been impacted us with a lot of things right now. The delivery times are a little longer. We're estimating at our level, the furniture that we need will take over a month to get once we place an order. In addition, we'd need a number of, more of these plexiglass dividers. We're looking at with more students and in a space, the need for air cleaners to keep, to get more of that air circulation in the rooms. We've got a lot of like little things on our list, like in the portables, more coat hooks so we could keep more kids' stuff separated, so it's not all touching and on top of each other. So there's a lot of really practical, kind of nitty-gritty things that need to be addressed. Storage, so that if we're taking more other pieces out of the classroom, so that we can make room for places for children to sit, we'll need storage for those furniture items. And then more individual materials. So right now, we've got sets of things so that students are working with individual activity bins, where they might have been four students, for instance, around a sand table. Now they might each have an individual bin or individual set of, small set of blocks. All of that, we've had some support from our parent group as well, and getting bins to house all of the individual materials and then individual activities, but we'll need more of those with more kids. Looking at the way we use the space, if you can, I think back to like Leave It To Beaver and the rows that are, and might be seen more in the upper grades. But in early childhood education, kids need to move in order to learn. And so when we're looking at three-foot or six-foot spacing, it's not a static thing. We need to build in room for children to move during their day. And when we're looking at the need for adults to be maintaining six-foot distancing as much as possible, we need to have those, enough area for them to have six feet of space. And that's not always possible in early childhood. We know that. We've provided additional PPE at our level for that reason. But the idea is to have that as much as possible. So like right now, where there might be around a teacher desk or reading table, that they're able to maintain six feet of spacing from where children are sitting, or at the Promethean Board teaching a lesson, that we've got spaces for children to sit six feet away. That's harder to maintain the more children we put in there. So it's something that the reopening team is working on and setting up some mock classrooms, and really seeing how many students can we fit in, and looking towards if, you know, if it was decided that we're safe to go to that three-to-six-foot spacing, how would you work that out in an actual classroom, still have everything you need? And some concerns for us are the practicalities of having students eating snack in a classroom three feet from a peer. And what does that look like? If you've got a plexiglass barrier in front of you, but a student three feet in this direction, like what are the things that we need to do to mitigate so that we feel safe with that? Are we going to have to have children eating snack in shifts? Washing hands in shifts, because there's not room for a hand-washing line that goes that far across the classroom? And then singing, what we've done at our level, we've had greater than six-foot distancing required, plus singing at low volume, so that we're not, we know that, you know, if you're singing loud and projecting, that that's more of a spreader. So at three-foot distancing, what happens with that? And it's important at this level because music is such a powerful educational tool at this level, and really trying to make preschool and kindergarten work without it. We would also lose a lot of the educational impact that we're able to have at that level. Let's see. The other things are things that I think are more universal. Staffing, looking at, we have a lot of staff that's been impacted by LEES quarantines. We've had to make some scheduling changes so that we have PARAs that are working longer days, Monday through Thursday, with abbreviated days on a Friday, because we have a need for longer arrival and dismissal times on those other days. What would happen looking at adding more time? How does that all work? With more kids, those arrival and dismissal times would become even longer. Busing impact, we don't know what the impact would be on how many more seats we would need on buses, and what would that, we have our midday buses this year, and those right now are little buses. So what will, how will that need to change? What more would we need? And looking at that impact, and then we also aren't sure if this would impact the movement of students from one format to another. Would we have students that say, well, if we can come more, then we want to move from remote? Would we have students that say, well, if we can come more, then we want to move from remote to in-person? And the opposite, will we have people who are in-person now for the hybrid that will say that we'd like to move to connected learning? So it's a lot, and it's a lot for the reopening team to kind of work through all of those. That's kind of our to-do list, is to figure out, as Brian said, how to make it happen. But those are the challenges that we're working with right now.
Thank you, Kathy.
Any questions?
Oh, go ahead, Jenny. I know you said you would need some extra hours in changing some staffing around for busing and those kinds of things. But have your children learned like the safety protocols with increased kiddos in the classroom? Would you foresee needing extra staffing in the classrooms? Little ones are kind of busy and twirly, so that they can maintain at least the three feet spacing and the safety protocols that they need?
Not so much more staffing for that. We would need more staffing because of some of our students who are in need of supports. If they're, the more that they're in the building, the more that we will need. So some of our kind of scheduling flexes that we've done this year to kind of make everything work, we would need to cover some gaps in that.
And you would let us know what those needs are?
Yeah, and I think what we really need is like our full contingent. And I know, you know, subs have been, it's been great to have some subs who are based in our building. We keep them busy. And so they've really become an integral part of what we've been able to do this year. So I think really making sure that we have the personnel that are there to support it. And then in light of knowing that we're going to have to likely do more quarantining and quarantining, you know, bigger groups, what will, what effect will that have on staffing? That's something else that we have to look at and kind of, and be prepared for, that we might have to pivot again as we go along, which has been what we do this year, right? For the past year, we figure things out.
Mrs. Stoyl, Ellen has a question.
Yes, you mentioned you'd need, you used the word furniture. Was that referring to the activity bins and storage bins and things like that?
Tables. We would need places for kids to sit. So under, in a normal year, we have a table that would be able to sit, we'd be seating six children. At a table, we can seat two there. So with the spacing. And we won't be able to add children, even with reduced spacing, we don't have enough space there to add more children to those tables and maintain.
And is there room for another table? Is there room for more tables in a classroom?
We would have to, yeah, but that's what we're talking about with how do we maintain the kind of bubbles around people. But you would be able to put more tables in between the ones we have because you'd be, in this case, we're talking about reducing the spacing.
You're talking tables.
So, yeah, and we're trying to find the table that would be the right size to kind of maximize what we're able to do in a classroom. So we're going to use what we have, but then beyond that, we want to, you know, purchase very carefully with an eye to something that will give us the maximum seating that we can fit in a classroom now. But also not be something that won't be appropriate in any other time for this level, so. So.
Okay, thank you.
So Mrs. Stoyl, I just had a question. If you go from fifty to seventy-five percent, what is your class size projected to be or not above?
That would put us, well, and it's an interesting thing because, right, we're also, we're looking at this from two angles. I, seventy-five percent of a class size would be twelve. We're pretty close to that right now. We're at about ten in some of our cohorts, a little, and some of them have a, we have kids that are on a little different schedule and stuff, so, but, but let's just say roughly ten. So we'd get to twelve. But we're looking at what would, what would we be able to fit? I think my, and the other struggle that I didn't mention here with seventy-five percent is scheduling. And how do you make that a schedule that makes sense?
Right.
And, you know, with kind of alternating, if you've got cohorts that are now fifty percent and then you're looking at the seventy-five percent, how do you make that make sense so that it's a schedule that parents can remember and rely on?
Right.
And so that's another thing that we're trying to puzzle through. And that's why at the other side of this is we're looking at, how many could we actually fit in a room? How close can we get to one hundred percent and be safe? So we're kind of coming at it from two different, two different angles in our building to try to figure it out.
So that's an important point, and you'll hear a little more about this. As the principals are considering how close to that seventy-five percent can they get, when we factor the remote students that aren't on campus, they're able to get pretty close to that, everybody else, all the hybrid kids, back in. Not all schools. So you'll hear, Mountain View and the high school are closer aligned with what Mrs. Stoyl is saying. Certainly, the space limitations at Bartlett and Maple make that more challenging. But any other questions for Mrs. Stoyl?
Jared?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. For Glen Lake, this would include for seventy-five percent, still no role model students.
Role model students is a conversation that we haven't really had. I have, we currently have our identified preschoolers in at one hundred percent of their IEP attendance. So they're, so we're able to meet all of their services and placement considerations. There are some, there are a lot of factors that go into that role model piece. And I think that's something that would require further discussion and consideration. But right now, we've just been looking at kind of the math of what can we fit? And looking at our kindergarten, who is not yet at their full schedule, and how can we get them closer to it?
My second question is, do we still have recess going on at Glen Lake?
Absolutely, yes. And we have utilized our outdoors more than ever this year for obvious reasons. I think it's a great thing, no matter what. But one interesting kind of aside, I thought that our sledding hill would be lost when we put in the modular. It has actually been improved and, and so we have classes that are out there and using the hill to go sledding at their recess time and getting some really nice outdoor time. That is something that will be impacted by having more kids. It will be harder to do that safely with a class of kids as we get more in. But we're using all of the outdoors at Glen Lake to the fullest potential that we can.
And we're not socially distancing three to six feet during recess with our students?
We're trying, we're not, we're not letting kids like cluster in close proximity. We're trying to keep them, you know, moving. I'm not saying that a kid never goes by and like tags another kid. I won't say that, but, but we're also trying not to have them just like, you know, sitting in each other's space. We're trying to keep that six foot distancing wherever we are as much as possible.
Yeah, they're always in motion, I could imagine.
But they're always in motion, yes. Exactly.
Thank you.
And that's a good thing.
Are you set, Jared?
Yes, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Ellen, go ahead.
For all our presenters when they speak, are we also talking about four or five days a week? Or are we looking at keeping it at two days a week?
Well, I would say hold fast on that for now. The intent of our presentation tonight wasn't to give real specific nuts and bolts about what a phase change would look like. And I would anticipate, you'll see on the next slide, that's one of the things that I would recommend. We have a further subsequent follow-up on that, Ellen.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Jenny.
Yeah, no worries. I don't mean to put this on you or any of the presenters. Between the literature review and the surveys that were done across the various schools, are there top two or three items that were identified in that process that would help be a mitigating factor in the plan you're developing? Is it outside of the three foot distance? Is it plastic shields? Is it spacing? Is it, were there two or three key things that were identified in that process?
To help us get to that, I couldn't quite hear, but to help us get to closer distancing? I would say really feeling the, feeling confident in the data review. I think it's really important that we're making data-driven decisions and doing it with good information. So really, you know, being able to look through all of this and kind of build it with staff too, so that where people are feeling comfortable with what they're doing and how we're able to do it and letting the group work through some of these challenges together in order to meet them. I really think that process is going to be key to being able to increase time and numbers in the building. And then I think we need places for kids to sit and then, and then to know that the mitigation measures that we have, like the dividers are sufficient. So figuring out that snacking piece, that singing piece, you know, those nuts and bolts is going to be key to really making anything work.
Thank you. Okay, I think we'll have Mrs. Pishka come up. I think you're going to see a lot of carryover. So when, by the time we get to Mrs. McCann, I think it'll probably be shorter. But you'll see that the challenges are common in a lot of ways. But anything to add, Mrs. Pishka?
No, I, what Kathy was very thorough. Bartlett and Maple Avenue both, as Brian has said, we talk a lot about space and how we can best utilize our space. So one of the things we'll need to discuss is how to change our floor plans and decide on what are non-essentials in rooms in order to gain more space for students. So that's something that's important in this. We want to make sure we give them as much space as we can as we consider other phases. We, I think Bartlett and Maple both talked a lot about transition, going from the, from the buses into the building and then, and then leaving. That is still something we're thinking about. How do you move that many bodies safely or have to wait for buses? Mountain View, Glen Lake, and Maple Avenue have long periods of time. We wait for buses to come and pick up our students at the end of the day. We have a forty-minute wait. Right now, we're able to distance them in the hallways. We have these markers along the hall, and everyone sits under a marker, so they're six feet apart. If we increased our number, we'd have to think about, how do we accommodate for that? And that would include staffing. Yeah, but I think Kathy was very thorough. Similar furniture that Bartlett and Maple have talked about. In order to have three feet in our small spaces, we would have to give up our tables. Right now, we have six foot tables, we have two students that sit at them. So in a classroom, currently at either school, we might have six tables with twelve students. So if we went to three feet, we would not be able to utilize those tables in order to have other students sit with them. So we would be back to desks. And that would be something we would be looking at, would be desks. We can get more space and more students and give them as much space as possible. So we also talked about our connected learning students returning. That's something, you know, I continue to encourage, I think that right now. I have a number of families that have seen the success that we have currently and want to have their children return. We have many that would like to come back in March. And some have already reached out to me and said, can we just make it right after vacation? You know, not wait for the end of the trimester? And I've honored all of those types of requests. But right now, we still have across the grades, we have sixty students that are connected learners. I would love to see especially our third and fourth grade students come back as we think about state testing. And they will have to do it in person if they participate. So it would be a great thing if they came back in the first of March. So that would be, you know, we'd be adding thirty-six students if they all came back, which would be a wonderful thing. And we can accommodate for that, we have seats for them. So I don't have anything else to add at this time.
Jared had a question, Mrs. Pishka.
It's been a while, I know that we didn't do the tours of the school this year as part of our review process. But has there been any consideration as we look to transition to a further phase of using the cafeteria gymnasium as a classroom and setting up desks in there? You know, has that been a consideration? And what would be some of our barriers to entry into implementing something along those lines?
So we could do that. Right now, we're using the gym as our staff space. We have seventy-two people who, you know, adults that need to take breaks, have places to go. We utilize every single space in our building with the exception of that cafeteria. So that became our staff space. So we have lunch tables there for them. And we might have up to twelve, twelve to fourteen staff members having a break at the same time. And in order to give them adequate distance with their masks off, we feel it's a comfortable, safe place where they can do their planning, they can eat their lunch and not feel that, you know, they're at risk. So that has been ideal for us. But if we had to consider other spaces, we would certainly look at that, yeah.
Thank you.
Jenny, did you have a question?
Yeah. Can the connected students pretty much seamlessly transition back into a classroom? Or would you need to have any transitioning things happen so they could do that?
Well, I always offer tour, and I know Jerry does as well. If they'd like to come in and see what it looks like, is, you know, that it's a little different as far as expectations for moving around the building, that sort of thing. But the, as far as curriculum, the connected learners and the hybrid are following the same pacing guide. So whatever week they are on in their connected learning class, they are also in hybrid. So that part is seamless. So I think that helps kids feel more comfortable too, when they get in and say, oh, we're doing that too, you know? And then they just jump right in, yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Pishka. Mrs. Kohler?
So echoing what Kathy and Suzanne talked about, we have a lot of the same similar barriers that we'd have to consider. Things like busing, staffing, like at Glen Lake and at some of the other schools, we have paraprofessionals who are covering our arrival dismissal waves because of the way that we have to do it. So their hours are lengthened Monday through Thursday and are shortened on Friday to be able to make sure that we have supervision for those students. Beyond all of those things like furniture, which is also an issue for Mountain View, as you know, as part of the budget process over the last couple of years, we had been going from those single tablet desks and moving towards tables. So trying to socially distance sitting at tables is going to be difficult. So ideally, we would be looking, if we were going to make a phase change, to get those single tablet desks. But beyond that, one of the big things that we'd be looking at is currently at the seventh and eighth grade level, we have, because of our AB cohort system, we have teachers two times a week beyond the remote Friday that are teaching sections just for our remote-only students. At the seventh and eighth grade level, we only have a math teacher who is only teaching full remote. Otherwise, I have teachers who are teaching social studies, language arts, and science, not only to our in-person students, but our remote students as well. So if we're to move phases, those teachers would then have kids sitting in front of them during those sessions when they're ordinarily teaching those remote sections. That's not the case at the fifth and sixth grade level because I do have two teachers who are only teaching those fully remote students. One other thing that I do want to mention is if we were to look at moving phases, one of the considerations. I do want to mention is if we were to look at moving phases, one of the considerations is is how many families may not feel comfortable with having their child in with closer distancing. And right now, at the fifth and sixth grade level, our our sections are completely packed. We can't fit any more students in those fully remote sections at the fifth and sixth grade level. So that would be something for us to consider. At the middle school last week, we sent out a survey to all of our families who are currently in a full remote environment, asking them about their intention to return for in-person learning on March 15th, which is the start of our third trimester. So we have that data coming in. Right now, we have about half of the people, families that have chosen to go on and do that survey quickly. So we've got 92 people who have gone on and done that. And of those 92, we have 36 that have already told us their intention to return. Right now, we have 190 students who are fully remote at Mountain View. So we still have a lot of data that that we're looking to get in. I know Mr. Fisher had asked about, you know, when we're having those conversations with other principals, what are kind of those barriers and things that you need to watch out for? The big thing that I heard over and over again was making sure that your rooms are plenty ventilated, and they talked about windows open and things like that in the fall as much as possible, but really making sure that your students are masked, masked all the time. Across all the schools that I talked to, they tried to do six feet of social distancing at all times when the kids were eating. So I know Kathy alluded to the fact that when they were eating snack, they had to do snack in waves because they didn't want kids in math, you know, not with masks on, three feet apart in a classroom. So one of the things that we're really going to have to look at at Mountain View is right now, all of our students are eating inside the classroom. We're not utilizing the cafeteria. If we're to change phases, we'd have to utilize the cafeteria and classroom spaces. So we are going to need to figure out food distribution, supervision for all of our students to make sure that we're getting them as far away from each other as possible. And like I said, all the other things that Suzanne and Kathy had mentioned, furniture, perhaps looking at air purification systems for some of our larger spaces, like our chorus room, for example. And then also, as I'm looking at numbers of our classrooms, like I had mentioned, when you're looking at square footage, I have classrooms at Mountain View as low as 733 square feet. And some of those 733-square-foot rooms happen to be eighth-grade classrooms right now. So I may have to look at switching teachers' classrooms if we were to switch phases and move them into larger classes, which may mean I may need to put some eighth-grade classes perhaps down at the beginning of the fifth and sixth grade hallway. So I would really have to look at scheduling, not only for students, but for teachers and where their rooms are as well, to try to get us as as distant as possible from one another moving forward.
Any questions for Mrs. Kohler? And Wendy, yeah, it is tricky. And Wendy, when you think, and I'll ask Kim the same question, when you think about moving phases, what would a really brief overview look like for you?
So I'll be honest with you. I think if we're going to be looking at going down to three-foot spacing, I quite honestly would try to look at going everybody in five days a week. If I could swing it, that's what I'd be looking at. And again, it's going to be dependent on what those remote numbers look like. If we were to be looking at that, I think I'd want to put a survey out to all of our families, not only our remote families, but our our students who are in person now, to get a feel on the community and where my numbers would lie. As I'm looking at numbers right now, I already know that I have eight sections that by square footage, if we're to move up a phase, I would need to reconfigure. I already know that. And that's without me taking into consideration where the special ed teachers are and where our paraprofessionals are as well. So that's kind of going to be a deeper dive that I'm going to have to take into the data once I figure out students and how many schedules I would perhaps need to move or rooms I would need to move of where all of my staff are. Because as Athena talked about, the data is pretty clear on six feet with the adults. So how do I keep those adults at that six feet, making sure in some cases, I could have the regular ed teacher in the room, a special ed teacher in the room, or perhaps two paraprofessionals in the room at the same time with our students?
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
And lastly, Mrs. McCann?
One of the functionalities and advantages that we have here at the high school, obviously, is the size of this facility. As you know, right now, we have a student population of roughly 1,035 students. As some of you will recall and have experienced, this building has held close to 1,400 students in in the past. So we do have not only that greater capacity, the larger footprint, the building is more spread out. So when we opened this year, there were a lot of pieces logistically that we had discussed over the summer, traffic patterns, lunches, all of these elements, that we quickly found with, on average, 425 students in the building on a daily basis, we were able to step a little bit away from in a manner that the other schools haven't been able to. So if we were to make a shift now for us, that's one of the the things we would reconsider. We would be looking at some of the logistical pieces that we had talked about over the summer that we see in place with traffic patterns and identified stairwell patterns for high-volume times during the day. We would look to continue to try and keep lunches at the sizes they are right now. We've spoken with Megan. We would look to do four lunch periods. We have that two-hour block from 11 to 1, where lunch is built into periods five and six. And so we would roll that. We've started to look at which classes would not accommodate a break in the middle for lunch, our lab, science classes, our technology education classes, our art classes. We'd look to place them on either end of that window for continuity of instruction. We've started to look at furniture needs and make some adjustments there as well. And a lot of those are puzzle pieces that here we have a fairly easier luxury of addressing. The largest kind of remaining question mark for the high school to move into the next phase, in addition to the health pieces and the data around distancing, really becomes schedules. Right now, we are in a very good place size-wise. We have roughly 200 students who are part of the online academy. If we were to take that next step and open, if everyone stayed where they were, we'd be looking to bring about 800 students into the building each day. None of our class sizes are prohibitive to our classroom spaces. We've been able to cap this year most of our classes at 20. We went with less electives, knowing that we were going to have to try to cohort our students and that their schedules don't line up the way that they do on a team or at the elementary level, that every single high school student's schedule is unique. So we were trying to cohort and balance sizes across eight periods with large numbers of student differential in in choice. So we needed to leave enough room in the classrooms for those schedule differences to be able to keep the in-person sizes on any given day at 12 or less right now. So when we look at our current class sizes, we have five sections this semester that are over 20. And these are singleton classes where we didn't have a a choice, right? So 23 students in a French four class. It didn't make sense to do two sections of that. So we have five of those classes that we would look to use some alternative spaces such as the steproom, potentially this space. We'd have to figure those out. But the biggest, biggest question mark is if we make a shift, what will families look to do? And we would want to start to gather that information from families at a fairly early point if we were going to start to have this conversation. Because if we have a significant number of families opt into the online academy, we have a number of classes that are at capacity there. State requirements, state minimum standards, max out classes at 30. And we have held to that in the online academy as well. And we think it is important that we continue to do so. We're at a place where, as you know, we brought on some additional staffing for this semester to allow for our the increases we've seen in the online academy. Both myself and Kelly Rosmack are teaching a section on the social studies side to accommodate some of those needs as well. So we're really in a kind of a tight spot with numbers there. Conversely, we also would need to know how many more students might physically be coming into the building and opt back if we were making this shift. And what does that start to do here? And are there some areas where we would have to look at also potentially getting creative in splitting out some of those in-person classes if we saw a significant demand for return? So, you know, really, at the high school level, this is not something we see as insurmountable or prohibitive. It really is about having enough time to gather the data, review where students and families are at, take a closer look at that schedule, and and move the the puzzle pieces on the board.
Any questions for Mrs. McCann? Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
So just a few last pieces. And I would certainly recognize that this was a lot of information to take in. So it was, we've been working kind of around the clock to continue to gather information for the research team to do the work that they've done. So I wanted to give some next steps for the board's consideration. Current our, continue our current model or increase the phase? I think that's something that each of you are going to need to think about as individual board members and be prepared to have continued conversations. Three-foot versus six-foot spacing, do you want more kids in school, more time? And is the board and the community prepared to accept the unintended consequences and risks involved? And the risks involved obviously includes transmissibility, health information, but the unintended consequences, things like scheduling, rostering, changing cohorts, remote students becoming in-person, in-person students becoming remote, not having enough staff. We, another luxury that we don't have in addition to space, is we don't have a lot of extra staff. So that's a very real consideration. My thinking is that the board might like to see a presentation by school, a little more specifically on what moving phases would look like. So as I shared, I asked all of the reopening teams to meet, and they have. I think that they will continue to work through that. And then if there's anything else that we could provide to the board that might be helpful to you. From a communications perspective, my intent was to put out a new video this week where I go over a lot of the information, share with parents kind of where we're at, give a status update, as well as review the numbers, because I think it's certainly time to do that. And lastly, I would just end with any other questions, anything that we haven't covered that might be helpful for the board.
Jenny? It sounds, it sounds like, Brian, that this could really turn out to be a per-school program, like one could be hybrid, one could be five days, one could be extra three days of in-school. And it sounds like it could all be really per-school.
I think that's a fair assessment, Jenny, because certainly the space needs at Bartlett and at Glen Lake are significant. But our staffing considerations and the complexity of the organizations are different for each school. So I think really, to give each of the reopening committees the time to do the proper planning, to look at the obstacles, to look at the challenges, to see what we can overcome, I think is going to be important on an individual basis. It is going to look different. So when the high school can say, yep, if we change to three-foot spacing, the way that they have the classes laid out right now, they're basically capped at 12. And there's the desks or the individual tables are all six feet apart. When they started to do the analysis and to add two kids or to add eight kids, you're breaking that six-foot distancing. So the high school very quickly said, if we're going to break the six foot, we might as well just bring them all back. So when we think about our planning, and it could look different at Mountain View, it might look different fifth and sixth, might look different than seventh and eighth, and I think that's appropriate. And I also shared with Mrs. Pishka and Ms. Saint-Jelet, first and second could look different than third and fourth, with the primary focus being on our youngest kids and getting them back as much time as we can. So as with everything COVID-related, this will continue to be a balancing act. This will continue to be, you know, take all the information, make the best informed scientifically-based decisions that we can, and always have health be a predominant factor that we consider, but also recognizing that kids not being in school is harmful to kids, and that we need to do everything we can to give them as much of a chance to be in school as much as they can. Their parents need it. Parents need to be able to to get back to work, to get the economy going. We all we all know the factors. So I think that we need to thread the needle on this. But I think that, you know, certainly, I think the data is in our favor, not knowing the impact of these three strands that are now spreading. But certainly, I think pre-looking at the the UK, the South Africa, and the Brazilian strand, I think that the data is trending in the right direction. So that's why I've been kind of increasing the importance of continuing to to move. It takes time to plan, and I would anticipate to have further conversations about this.
And we're still doing all the creative things that we can do to get staff in place, because it sounds like we're going to really need an increase of staff if we have teachers using their duties and and all those in Paris doing classes and stuff, because the more kids that we have back, the more difficult that's going to be. And if we have Kim doing classes and we have a full contingency of students at the high school, that's probably going to be very difficult. So it sounds like we really
Agreed. Staffing is and will continue to be the most challenging variable for us. And interestingly enough, if you asked Mrs. Pishka, if she had a second grade opening, how many people would apply for that job? Pre-COVID, she would have close to 200 and sometimes more applicants for one job. Mind blown. If you asked Mrs. McCann how many physics candidates she gets, she would tell you she's lucky if she gets two or three. But what's fascinating is even now, if I said to Mrs. Pishka, go hire five elementary teachers, she can't find them. So where there was this massive, massive pool that we could go in and we could say, okay, we want someone who's dual-certified, we want someone who has at least a master's degree, five years' experience, she could go in and she could take 200, and next thing you know, she's got a short list of really strong candidates. We can't fill these positions now. The reason Kim's teaching is because we don't have enough people. So staffing is and will continue to be the most challenging piece of this. And we've been able to figure it out and make it work at that 50% capacity. When you increase the staffing needs, and then you have people quarantined, people sick, people who, for whatever reason, aren't able to come to work, those issues compound. And we've seen that in neighboring communities. There are some neighboring communities that reopened at more of a a full-capacity level and then had to go full remote because they didn't have the staffing. So we want to be careful. I think we were very purposeful on the model that we had at the beginning of the school year. We maintained it through the entire Christmas section when a lot of places were were closing, were going full remote. We didn't think that was best. And now we're at the point where we'd like to increase kids' time in school, but we have to balance public health, we have to balance making sure that people are safe, and we have to make sure that we're taking care of our faculty and staff and that we have enough people to implement the model as we design it.
I haven't seen many notifications of student teachers. Are student teachers available with colleges being closed and staffed? That would be a good area to
Student teachers could be an element that we could consider. We had very purposely not allowed student teachers at the beginning. And really, that was a conscious, purposeful decision that we made. We didn't want to increase. Sometimes, college students make bad choices. I mean, certainly not when Mr. Gross was an undergraduate student, but other other individuals. We were nervous about We were nervous about having college kids.
I can see that.
You know, the idea that we don't know what they're doing, are they going to potentially put our, you know, our community at risk? We didn't allow that. And I would say we're just starting to look at whether that could be a viable option. I know there was one school district in Maine that I just read about that was able to bring in a few student teachers, and it helped them tremendously. So there are people that are looking for internships. So that's something that we're beginning to look at a little more. But we were hesitant to do it originally.
I can see that. So I saw Ellen's hand and Tim, Ellen, Jared. So Ellen, go ahead.
Okay, I have two things. When does the current trimester end?
When does the trimester end?
Which school?
March 15th, the new one starts. Is that same for you, Wendy?
March 15th is for Mountain View, yes.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking if we're going to, when we went to logically open. If we, I don't know how the board or administration feels, and I don't know how many children. I imagine there are a number of children. I know the priority kids have come back, okay? But there must be children who have various needs, who, for whom this, what we're calling the hybrid model, is not working real well for. If we were to approve the three-foot distancing, would that enable us to bring some of those needy children back?
Yes.
Prior to, you know, doing a whole big thing, but bringing those kids back for maybe like four days a week or something? And I don't know the numbers, I don't know if that was taken care of with the priority.
We would need to go school by school and really grade by grade, classroom by classroom, to look at that more. But I would tell you that the principals, and just to make sure everyone's clear on what a priority return student is, within our hybrid model, all students were on campus two days. We offered something that we call priority return, that parents could self-identify. And then based on teacher recommendations, we gave additional days. We already have a number of students who are on campus four or five days a week. So this already, we're already there. It's not everybody.
Right.
And we tried to accommodate special education needs, students that might have any other unique needs, as well as family considerations. So we do have a lot of kids that are already back more. So I do want to make sure that everybody knows that. But, you know, clearly, and it's almost been a year at this point, so, you know, think about how long this has all been. A year ago at this point, there were the first cases in Washington State. And right around this time, within the next couple of weeks, was when the first cases in New York City started. So it's been a long time, and I think kids' skills need sharpening. I think their ability to progress from a social-emotional perspective, behaviorally. So something that is part of our planning, I didn't mention earlier, but we're in looking at some of our behavioral planning contingencies. When you have more kids in small places, behavior escalates. So that's something that we need to have a focus on as well. So, you know, we think that, again, I believe kids need to be in school more. I've always believed that. But we have to do it safely, and we have to do it purposely and methodically.
So my next question is, without making a decision of fully opening for everybody and that kind of thing, I don't even know if the board would entertain this tonight or at the next meeting. But if we simply went to three-foot distancing instead of the six-foot, three to six, instead of six feet, would that enable some more children to get back? And I guess we need to know how many kids and if that could work, but more children back into the classroom like four days a week?
Certainly, by changing the distancing, the reason that we put as much focus on that singular element as we did is that is the single biggest determinant of how many kids we can have in our classrooms.
Is that distancing, just distancing piece of this whole equation, something that, I don't even know if the board would consider it, doing tonight or at the next meeting, getting more information? How would the administration feel about that?
My recommendation would be to not take action on that this evening. I think that there's an awful lot of information that's been presented to you. I'd really like people to be able to digest it. Because our presentations were, you know, just really, we've been working on in the last day, the last couple of days over the weekend, we didn't have the ability to get those to you ahead of time. So we wanted you to be able to take it all in, and I think that's probably a conversation at the next meeting. And I think that we also need to have a little more specificity of what each school would be looking at. So I think those teams need time, they need time to plan, they need time to think about if there are purchases that they need to make. Mrs. McCann didn't mention this, but I will. We had planned on replacing classroom furniture out of this year's budget. So Kim needed just shy of 200 single desks that can be kind of configured. We already ordered them. So some of those things we're already moving forward with in planning for our next phase of having more kids in, or certainly for the fall. But, you know, again, my hope would have been that teachers would have been able to get the vaccine. That's not happening. I think we've shown that we can run schools and keep people safe when we follow the appropriate mitigation measures. And, you know, again, this question of three feet versus six feet, it really is probably the most important singular question for us to progress forward.
Are you good, Ellen?
I understand the distancing thing. I'm thinking of separating out the needs of those with needs, whether they are special ed or 504 or social-emotional, whatever their needs are, as opposed to the entire school district. Somehow, if we can approve those, the three-foot, how many of those? Maybe that's some information that the administration came back with.
Yeah, let us give that some more thought.
Don't do everything, I don't know, I don't know what you're coming back to us with. And I'm certainly going to go over the information we got tonight. How many more children could we get back in school on a more regular basis? I've always been concerned with child or special needs kids, you know, 504 kids, and the children with other, whether it's family needs or whatever, getting, and the harm that's occurring to these kids all along. If we can get more of them in, if all it took was the three-foot thing, if it's not 300 of them, can we do that while we're still trying to work out the logistics of opening everything else up?
Why don't you let us give that some thought?
Yeah, thank you.
Tim?
My question's redundant now, it's not worth asking.
Are you sure?
Yes, it's not worth asking.
Okay. Jared?
You always have good questions, Tim.
I know.
I don't want to repeat things.
No. I'll try to not continue to say what other people have said. Thank you for everybody that actually presented. It's good that we have the, some of the empirical evidence that we would be using in the decisions, especially as we talk about the three feet versus the six feet. As an educator, as an adjunct at a university, I do know that some of our college-bound seniors or juniors, they really need to have the skill set to work remotely, even though some of their peers might need to be in full school. So as we look forward to opening, you know, I would continue to recommend that some of those college-bound individuals do take a hybrid approach, and continue a hybrid approach for their learning in high school, because it is a skill set they will need when they go to college or the university level. My other question, and this is more of a question, is I know that we have February vacation coming up. I know that we're going to have April vacation coming up. There was a spike in November when we had a Thanksgiving vacation. Is, you know, that going to be baked into the plan and the recommendation? And I am truly looking for a recommendation at our next meeting from the administration to say, this is what we recommend and this is why, or here are the scenarios with our recommendation. I think that that would be important for our next meeting as we go through and continue to reevaluate some of these plans and some of these surveys that we'll get back from our teachers, our parents. But, you know, what is it going to look like when we do have our vacations? And are we planning on going back to a 50-50 hybrid if we do move forward, you know, in the April timeframe when we come back in May? You know, that's something that I'd like to say as well.
Yeah, I just, real quick on that, Jared, I would say there are some school districts that are already doing additional time after February and April vacation. I would say that's not something that I support. I think that, much like through the Christmas time, I think that we're able to have kids in school. Hopefully, families are making good choices. You know, we certainly can't dictate what people are doing outside of school. In terms of whether we would anticipate more spikes, I don't know that I fear that we're going to have more spikes, although some people have said Super Bowl parties are probably going to lead to spikes in the next, you know, hour, in the next week or so. But I think it's the variance, I think it's these new strains that I'm most concerned about. The, you know, certainly, these three predominant strains that are now being passed around are more transmissible. So what does that potentially do to us in the next couple of months? I think it's anybody's guess. But we would have to have a model that had fluidity and customization built into it so that, for whatever reason, if we have to retract, we can retract. We have to have that ability to move forward or to move backwards from a restricting model based on needs. So if we had a cluster here, or, you know, if we had multiple clusters, if we had an outbreak, we'd end up full-remote. It would be a period of time, and then we would ease back in. So I think we, by school, have to always have that contingency planning that if things get bad, for whatever reason, or we don't have the staffing to be able to move forward, that we can, you know, we can push or we can pull back. And I think that everything has to be built on that model with that premise. I think as teachers and staff get vaccinated, I think that gets better. Teachers are going to be nervous about this. So I want the board to understand, a lot of us would be nervous about the impact of having more kids, more time. But again, this is the thing that you've got the balance. We have risk, and we have student needs, that kids need to be in school, need to be with loving, trusted adults. They need good habits, they need good routines. And a lot of those kinds of things have been disrupted. And I think that in many ways, our hybrid model has been successful, but it is an imperfect model. Kids need to be with qualified, trained, caring adults all day.
So is the thought that our administrators would send out a survey within the next couple of days to find out how many families are thinking of coming back? So that we have a number for March 2nd, but we have vacation, so?
Yeah, some of that, they already have some of that information. We have a principals' meeting on Thursday, so we'll talk about it then. I think we need to digest this. We wanted to see, you know, what the direction of the board was. So let us give this all some additional thought. And again, I also want to make sure that our teams at the school level have sufficient time to plan, they have sufficient time to work through the logistics. What we don't want to do is jump into something before we're ready and not have the success that we need, and then we have to backtrack. I don't want to do that. So if we're not at the point that we feel we can progress forward successfully, then I'm going to want to hold where we are. Because what I don't want to do is give more kids more time and then have to take that back. That would be more of a hardship on families. And interestingly, I would imagine I'll probably have a number of parents that reach out to me tomorrow. In the last week or two, I've had a lot of parents that have said, you know what? Hybrid is imperfect, but we can rely on it, we can trust it, it's consistent, stay the course. So I think that right now you would have, I think more parents would want kids in school more time. But I think that a lot of people are pretty happy with the level where we're at. But again, for me, it's about the numbers. When you look at the numbers, the numbers are telling me it's time to progress forward.
So for the next meeting, you'll have numbers from the schools, what they're looking at for who would want to come back, more of a nuts and bolts of what it looks like. I also would like to have what are the consequences from going to six feet to three feet? So right now, if a student or is exposed to COVID, it may only be one or two kids of that classroom that goes in quarantine. But if we go to three feet, that potentially could be the entire class.
Yes, and I would...
And that's a big key thing for all of us to think about.
It is, and I, this is, again, one of the unintended consequences. I do want to be clear about this. At the elementary level, I would say any cases would result in the entire group being quarantined, because we're not going to have the ability to say, well, you know, maybe they didn't mix, maybe they did mix. The older students, it would likely be a similar type approach. So we would probably have more students quarantined. But again, if the cases are going down, that could very well be a risk that's worth taking.
It sounds like we have the empirical evidence from studies that have been done for classes that have been at three feet, what that looks like. So there is data out there that we can rely on to make our decisions.
For the transmissibility, there sure is. And anecdotally, the districts that have been using three feet, they're putting out more for quarantine. So we know that that's, that's an outcome. But again, that's likely worth the risk.
Will you share those presentations?
I think we'll do them right here.
No, no, the ones from tonight.
They were emailed to you today.
Okay.
And two emails. Yes.
I see, they're not going to hear you, MC, you have to go to the mic.
Good evening. One of the things I'm just looking at, Brian, is the calendar. So if we look at the next meeting, I believe your next board meeting, Denise, is March 1st?
March 2nd.
That Monday, right? Which is directly backs up, Brian, against vacation week. So I'm not sure if you're looking for data and information and things that administration's going to be ready for you on March 1st. So I'm just thinking in terms of your due dates, please consider that.
We'll give it some thought, and we'll see where we're at right now in terms of what we think we could present for next steps. So let, understanding that, the good news is, is no one's going anywhere.
Right. So that would be March 15th. The only concern I have, like what Mrs. Stoyl had said, if they have to order stuff, everything is so behind that that could impact the kids coming in.
That's why, for example, we already made the high school order.
Right, the high school.
Some of these, I'll work with the principals, and we'll shake down Mr. Gross for money as we need to.
Oh, we got a grant, so we're good. 1.1 million.
So does anybody have any other requests or something they would be wanting from administration with either the next board meeting or realistically probably March 15th, giving everybody time, especially since we have a break? Jenny? I'm sure MC already has it on her calendar, but probably some social-emotional workshops would be in order for teachers too.
Yeah, we've, we can talk more about that. But it's also going to be, I think, kids are going to need time to reconnect. I think that kids are, they're kind of contained within their little groups, and groups aren't mixing with other groups. So we're going to have, next school year, when I talked about that premise of remediation for all, that's going to be skill deficit remediation. But that's also going to be the social-emotional supports, the connections, the sense of belonging. All of those things are critically important to kids as well. Yep.
Yeah, go ahead, Ellen.
If, I don't know what recommendations or other information would be coming forward. But I'm not thinking about, in this case, about the entire student body, but I'm thinking about a recommendation about the three-foot for that sub-cohort of children, I don't know if that's the right word, the subset of children who have needs, who may not be back, who need to come back full-time, but weren't part of the priority. So sort of like two different decisions? I don't know, am I making sense?
I hear what you're saying, Ellen. I think what we need is, again, we're going to need some more time to digest all of these things. The schools had already identified the priority return students. And there are a lot of people that didn't ask for priority return, but... that didn't ask for priority return, but probably could have or should have, unfortunately. But, you know, we'll continue to work through those on a case-by-case basis, and understanding that we're up against vacation, we will do the best we can to present the board meeting after vacation. And again, I think this is progress. I think we'll continue to, you know, work through the logistical pieces, and we'll plan to present more at your next meeting. So thank you.
And if you think of any questions, email you.
Please do.
Okay. Anyone else's questions before we say goodnight to our administrators?
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming out tonight and your presentations. Get home safe. Thank you, Brian.
Indeed, they did a great job. Thank you, guys.
A lot of work, thank you.
All right, so we just have a few more things left on the agenda tonight. Next is board authorization request. Board motion is needed to grant continued authorization to the superintendent under the superintendent's emergency operations plan for COVID-19, as a temporarily regulation to policy EBCF, pandemic epidemic emergencies, and to grant the superintendent or his designee authorization to respond at his or her discretion to changing public health circumstances, and to allow the superintendent the ability to modify or adapt school policy as needed until the next successful school board meeting. Motion by Ellen, do I have a second?
Seconded.
By Tim. Okay, I'll do roll call. Jenny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, we're unanimous. The next one is a motion to grant the business administrator authorization to make payments out of sequence, and to notify the board of such payments at the next scheduled school board meeting. I have a motion by Ellen, do I have a second?
Seconded.
Who said it first? Tim?
Oh, I didn't give a second.
All right, we'll do, we'll do roll call. Jenny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, we're unanimous. So now we have school staffing.
Just a few notifications this evening, nothing that requires your action. We have a track change for Mr. Nate Bracy, moving from bachelor's to bachelor's 15, so congratulations to Mr. Bracy, and we will certainly send him a congratulatory letter. And we have three notifications of unpaid leave requests. We have Heather Mason from Glen Lake, Jamie Shine from Bartlett, and Carly Orr, and each of these are a little different, but these are people that have requested and have been granted unpaid leave, so those would just be notifications.
All right, thank you. Other business that may legally come before the meeting? Anyone? Nope, great. We do not have non-public tonight, so the next board meeting is Monday, March 2nd. If you have any questions about tonight that you want administration to send, email Brian. Anything else? People are taking motion for...
Heather, I think it's March 1st.
It's March 1st? I thought it was March 2nd.
I thought it was the 2nd.
March 1st, yes, you're right.
How about that?
March 1st, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Ellen?
Adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Hang on one sec, what, a vacation?
No, that's for, we haven't approved the calendar yet.
We haven't approved it. That's for next year.
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So sorry.
Jenny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, we're adjourned.